To our October 5, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, before I call the meeting to order, I would ask if you have a cell phone to please either turn it off or put it on silent. If not, the lieutenant back there will make sure you don't leave without buying everybody lunch, and that could be very expensive. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order in about 20 seconds. Okay, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Hayes, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure thing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Next item is the adoption of the agenda. Meta manager.
Good morning, members of the board, members of the public. We need to remove action item H4. Staff will bring that back at a later date.
H4 removed.
Yes, sir. And then we need to table action item H6 until our next regularly scheduled board meeting at the request of the applicant.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with action items four being removed and action item six tabled till the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with item four removes, item six tabled, and allow Chair to deviate.
Second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and just let the record reflect that Mr. Moletta is joining us on Zoom. So we do have a quorum. Call to the public. We'll start with the first speaker here, Mr. McEwen. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir.
And you got three minutes, just.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board, and staff. I would respectfully request that the Board not approve item five in the action items of today's agenda. This plan looks to be an obvious sidestep of the Governor's Executive Order 2021-18. I don't challenge your authority of using these funds from the American Rescue Act of 2021, but I would suggest these funds are meant for the whole of the society, not targeted for county employees. May I suggest you strive for better ways to use these funds. Perhaps input from the citizens and small businesses would be productive. I'd also challenge the negative ramifications of this plan. How are the employees that do not get vaccinated going to be treated? Are they to suffer separation and special requirements to be in the building to do their job, terminated? Is religious exemptions and herd immunity not going to be considered? At a cost of about $200,000, I would further challenge the efficacy of this plan by recent studies that are emerging across the country. Mr. Terrell has written me that he is the advisor for this Board in giving interpretation of CDC guidelines. In recent news, a spokesperson for CDC, Dr. Fauci, is under investigation of perjury and possible a coal conspirator to fund this virus. The state of Arkansas, in concert with Congress, is challenging CDC guidelines to recognize herd immunity. This pandemic begs the answer to the question, why doesn't Santa Cruz County have a county health board as prescribed by law in the Arizona revised statutes? Two recent studies should make an impact in how you decide this issue. In Washington University, a large study group has shown that those infected by the virus have more effective immunity over a year against the original virus and effective against the Delta variant. These findings are supported in Israel and other European countries. Is this category of employee not eligible for compensation or proper recognition? Another Midwestern study has showed that the efficacy of the vaccination has diminished tenfold in seven months, even after boosters. In summary, I would like to make two significant observations. There is no evidence that your mandates that are a violation of our civil rights, in my opinion, have saved anyone. But current research is now proving how your mandates have destroyed lives, families, and the normal development of our children and businesses in Santa Cruz County. I respectfully suggest that you quit pontificating as our savior, stop the fear mongering, and let us get back to our lives. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McEwen. Next, Mr. Tom Walsh. Morning, sir.
Morning, and thank you. I'm Tom Walsh from the Friends of the Tubaq Precicio and Museum in Tubaq, Arizona. I want to thank the Board for allowing us to operate since 2010 and in our agreement with the state to keep the park open. We appreciate that. Since it's been a long time since anybody has done a presentation from the Friends to this Board, I want to go back to March of 2019 when we had a smoke incident in our museum, which closed it for eight months. That was followed closely by COVID in 2020, when the park was closed for another seven weeks. So we struggled through those days. Now, with the lack of volunteers, we're only open five days a week. We do have one-page staff member, our director, Shannon Stone. In the last year, we were able to hold an outdoor art event called Exuberance. It was both a fundraiser and really gathered local artists and others who came and celebrated both the southwest culture and the outdoors with us. We've created or updated many of the museum exhibits and created an I Am Tubaq exhibit, which showcases the less-than-the-heroes of Tubaq and more of the regular people. We're working with the Oodam on our Native American exhibit. We're going to open a Baca float exhibit in November. We've just recently closed our Dark Skies Artist Interpretation Temporary Exhibit, and we'll be putting up a new one on the Indian Wars of the 1880s. Last year, we had no school groups visit the park. So far this year, we already have four school groups signed up for the fall. We were able to hold outdoor concerts and lectures, which was greatly supported by our community. As an aid to our community, we had a Free Smithsonian Day just recently. We are also part of the Blue Star Military Admission Discount Program. We're helping the Tubaq Chamber of Commerce with storage for some of their files and handouts that they have. The Onza Trail Volunteers, the Onza Trail Coalition, is able to use our property as their home base. We have installed a bicycle rack for the members of the community who come down to visit, and we're considering an electric car power station for our parking area. And the last thing we're hoping to do is we need to get more visitorship from those many people who come to Tubaq and say, we never knew that you were here. We need to consider redoing our front entrance to be more attractive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. David Goodman.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here about the Calabaza Cemetery. I'm sure, I don't know if everybody knows about it, but it's been around for almost 300 years. The last people buried there were residents of Calabaza, Arizona, which is now extinct, which is over 100 years ago. Goes back before that to Union soldiers, Civil War veterans, that were buried there after they died from malaria at Fort Mason. Forty soldiers are buried there. Before that, it goes back to many believe as the cemetery for the Mission San Cayetano de Calabazas, which is in ruins now near Pendleton. I've been cleaning it now for, going on seven years, and with very little help. I've asked county, which last year did come through. I had chopped down a bunch of trees that were in the way, had stump grinders come in, so I appreciate that. Also had a trash service, which I would call, county would come pick up two or three bags of trash maybe a month, you know, big trash bags. And I think it's COVID and all that kind of just, that kind of just fizzled out. So I'm here just to ask for continued help from the county. Also, I have the state. I have a state prison workers. I'm talking with one of the wardens from Tucson, and she told me that she's going to be able to get me some prison workers to come out, which they came out last year twice, and they did excellent work. Also asking the county for, again, the continued trash pickup, and if they have a probation or a community service people, they can come out. I would appreciate that. That's about it. I mean, I appreciate any help you guys can give. I'm not asking for a lot. I have a private company from Tucson who volunteered to come out and spray weed killer indefinitely on a as-needed basis, which is a tremendous, tremendous help. So the county just doesn't have to worry about that.
Can you do me a favor? Can you put your phone number on here so staff can contact you?
Okay. Anyway, that's all I have. So thank you, guys.
Jennifer, can you?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, if you can. So David, if you can, give us your phone number. Thank you. Okay, is anyone on the phone wishing to participate under call to the public? Raise your hand or... Okay, see none. Jennifer. Thank you, David.
Good morning again. I'm Jennifer St. John, Santa Cruz County manager. At this time, I'd like to ask Commander Rodriguez to join me here at the podium. I'd like to thank the Board for their ongoing support of our Employee Recognition Service. And so today, we're going to honor Commander Rodriguez for 25 years with the county. Chairman Reese, if I could turn it over to you for your reading of his bio.
Thank you, Jennifer. So Raul Rodriguez was hired on September 16, 1996, as a deputy sheriff in the patrol division. In October of 1997, he was reassigned to the Criminal Investigation Division as an investigator. There, he was responsible for investigating numerous different types of misdemeanors and felony crimes. Let me change my glasses. There we go. I can read better now. Deputy Rodriguez was transferred back to the patrol division as a lead officer in January 2002. In October of 2002, he was promoted to sergeant and assigned to the Criminal Investigation Department as its sergeant. He supervised the detectives in all their duties, some of which included pre-employment background, investigations, neighborhood watch programs, and oversaw the investigation of misdemeanors and felony crimes. On August 26, 2006, he was promoted to lieutenant and assigned as the operations division commander. In this position, he was responsible for overseeing the patrol division, criminal investigation, dare deputies, reserve deputies, and the law enforcement assisting. He remained in the position for almost 10 years before he was reassigned to the Adult Detention Division as a jail commander, responsible for the care, custody, and control of inmates, officers, and civilian staff. On Friday, Commander Rodriguez will retire from the county after 25 years of service. Sheriff Hathaway stated RJ has been a great asset to the county and an upbeat influence to us all. Commander, we wish you the best in your future endeavors, and thank you for your commitment to our community and its residents for the last 25 years. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. It's been my greatest honor to be able to serve our community where we all come together. On speeches, I didn't think it was going to be as hard as it is to be able to walk away. It's been a pleasure working with everybody, Ms. Hunley, Mr. Brackler, Chairman, everybody. There's just so many people to want to recognize, and I don't want to miss anybody out. But thank you all for your support, your guidance, putting up with the silly questions that sometimes I ask, and maybe some of the decisions. Some of you guys may remember, when I started, I had hair. So that's how long we've been together. Thank you, everyone, for everything that you've done.
Well, I thought you did it as a courtesy to our member Rudy Moletta. That way, you guys looked alike. I thought you were just trying to be like him. But Raul, thank you so much for your years of service. I remember you when you first came to Nogales, when we worked at the city of Nogales.
Yes, sir.
With your dad. In fact, it's been more than 30 years, I think. So, you know, good luck to you, and we really appreciate your steadfast leadership. You know, law enforcement is not easy. And unfortunately, you know, there's been...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Hold on, Rudy, and then I'll recognize you. So there's been some incidents where we've lost a couple of officers, even though one used to work at the sheriff's office before you went to. So you have a dangerous job out there, so for that, we thank you. Supervisor Moletta. I mute yourself.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
Hey, I just want to thank RJ for his hard work and dedication to Santa Cruz County. He always greets you with a smile. He's a true gentleman, and I personally want to thank him for his friendship and his hard work to Santa Cruz County. Not only that, his wonderful-looking haircut.
He wants to look like you when he grows up, he says, Rudy.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moletta.
RJ, also, I just want to chime in and thank you for your 25 years of service to the county and also to the community. It's not an easy, it's not an easy career track that you've chosen. There's a lot of challenges in it, a lot of risk in it, but you have definitely prevailed, and you've been an asset to all of us, and so I just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Brackler. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Are we done, Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
Good. Okay, so there is no more call to the public. Hey, RJ? Okay, we'll move on then to current events. Board of Supervisors, Vice Chairman Bracker.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reese. This past week, we had the, all three members of the Board of Supervisors travel to the County Supervisors Association Conference that was held up in Yaxby County in Prescott. It's a chance for the county supervisors from across the state to get together, talk about the pending legislation that we're expecting from the, from the, from the state government, but also talk about our priorities as counties and identify things that we really want to work on. One of the things that came up over and over again was trying to eliminate the cost shifts, or as we're going to call them now, the unfunded mandates. It really is something that's impacting the county. You know, every, you know, there's, we do what we believe is a very good job of managing our budgets, but year after year, we keep getting these unfunded mandates from the state as they lower their taxes and like to pound their chest that they're doing a great job, pass these costs out to counties, cities, and towns, and it's extremely challenging. So that was one of the key things. The other thing that we talked about was transportation infrastructure and the fact that the Arizona Department of Transportation has about $3 billion of infrastructure needs that have not been allocated for by the legislature, and the fact that the cities and towns and counties also have a tremendous amount of unfunded transportation need. Arizona is probably the last state that has not adjusted its sales tax for gasoline or for alternative fuel vehicles to maintain roadways. And so this is a priority for this Board, is also a priority for all county supervisors to try to push through this problem. But that was the main goal of the meeting, other than, you know, finally getting together after a year and a half with our friends that are other county supervisors and meeting. We had about a third of the county supervisors this year in the state of Arizona, throughout the state of Arizona, change. So we have a third new member, so we had an opportunity to meet those people, talk to them, give them a little guidance on what we've been doing for the last years. But that's what I have to report. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Moletta, anything to report?
No, I just want to be brief. I just want to thank my two colleagues for also making the trip. We all made the trip to Prescott, and it was good to be in person at our annual summit and provide good input from our community. I just want to thank you both, and it was good to see everyone there. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Moletta. And just to echo some of the comments of my colleagues, we as a Board are ever vigilant to try to stop sometimes legislation that winds up hurting, hurting everyone. And at the end of the day, what the state does are unfunded mandates to us because we as a Board, while they think they're hurting us, eventually trickles out to our residents and our taxpayers. And I think it's important that our community stay engaged with what's happening in the state legislature and, you know, sometimes the comments of the public carry a little more weight than than those of elected officials because they say we have a vested interest. Well, we do because we don't want our residents to wind up paying for what the state should be paying. There are a lot of costs that affect us, and so, you know, we try to do what we can together with our colleagues from the other counties to adopt a legislative agenda that tries to address some of these, these problems. And I know that they're mainly the smaller counties get hit with, with the biggest burden sometime because AmeriKopa County, or Pima County, or Penel County, they raise their taxes one or two, three cents, and it just creates an amount of revenue for, for, for the counties. And then along with the changes that were made to the retirements that communities, not just Santa Cruz County, but cities and towns, are having to face with that huge debt of another, you know, issue that the state didn't act on, or they were not really running the fund the way it was. But so, you know, everyone is stuck with having to make that, that whole PRSP hole. So a lot of issues, you know, and then we don't know what's going to happen at the federal level, so we will keep everyone informed of what it is that we're doing. So with that, I will move on to our manager, meta manager.
Thank you. Over the last two weeks, I virtually attended a Port Authority meeting. Mercio and I have continued to explore options to fund our unfunded liability for PSPRS. Supervisor Moletta and I have continued our biweekly meetings with ADOT and ADEQ regarding the Fisher activity, and I also attended the CSA Summit with you all, as you know. And that's all I have to report to Supervisor Reese.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Item E, Department Reports and Activities, Finance, Cash Investment Expenditure, Revenues. Mercio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. The cash investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $11,933,416 with an investment amount just a little bit over $10 million. The road fund has an overall balance of $1,763,272 with an investment amount of $815,000. The flood control district has an overall balance of $1,972,721 with an investment amount of $1.8 million. The jail district has an overall balance of $1,965,258 with an investment amount just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $34,791,618 with an investment amount of $15,779,000 for an estimated end-of-month balance of $10,602,838.
Any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much.
Great. Good. We'll move on then. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to recess and convene into the flood control district.
So moved.
I will second that discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You're now convening to the flood control district. Item one, Director's Project Report. Mr. Hayes, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. You should have a copy of the report there in front of you. I do have a few items to update on. Item number one, turns out we had a little bit of an electronical glitch in our alert system during the middle of the month that affected Red Mountain, so some numbers didn't get reported. So we've gone through and updated those amounts, and we ended the month of September ranging from .91 inches at Petro Creek to a high of 3.5 inches at Patagonia Lake. For item number two, this brings our monsoon 2021 totals to a range of 8.7 inches at the Santa Cruz River in Tubaq at the, at Bridge Road Bridge to a high of 23.66 inches at Peña Blanca Lake for an average across the county of approximately 14.1 inches for the monsoon season, keeping in mind that our normal season is 11 inches. Our normal total annual rainfall is 11 inches, and this brings us up to right around 16 and 1/2 inches of rainfall for the year on average since January 1st. Item number three, unfortunately, we still have not heard back from FEMA on the Ephraim Canyon project. I've reached out to them. I'm waiting to see if they're, if they can give me a timeline for a final decision on that grant. Item number six, we ended the month with 299 requests for floodplain information, 36 from the city of Nogales, six from the town of Patagonia. Item number seven, we ended the month with five requests for site reviews on properties. One was from the town of Patagonia. And item number eight, we ended the month with 12 requests for floodplain use permits, five of which were from the city of Nogales.
Thank you. Any questions on the Director's Report? Not monthly report from the city of Nogales?
Did not receive one from the city of Nogales.
Item three, monthly report from the town of Patagonia?
Did not receive one from the town of Patagonia.
Okay, so at this time, under item four, I'll open it up for public comments. Mr. McEwen, if you go up to the...
It's a simple question, sir.
Well, yeah, we need to record you, Steve, so.
Again, would you repeat what our average train poll was for this year and how it compares to what we normally have, please? Our average for the monsoon was 14.1 inches. We, the average for the monsoon is usually 11 inches.
Thank you.
Our annual total average is usually 17 inches for the year, and we're at about 16 and 1/2 so far with two and 1/2 months left to go roughly.
Cool.
Hopefully, we'll get to our average. Anyone else under public comments? If not, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our flood control and convene into the Board of Equalization.
So moved.
I'll second that discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So Board of Equalization, so here is the decision on the, on the, the hearing officer's decision for the tax year 2022 appeals. We have one, two, three, four, five appeals. Okay.
By the way, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, so we had five, two, three of those were all for the Plaza de Anza in Tubaq.
Okay.
And for number one, Taylor, there was recommended no change. For number two, Mr. Corbett, Mrs. Irene Corbett, we had recommended a reduction, and the Board approved of our reduction. But there was a, the hearing officer did, did require we amend the valuation for Plaza de Anza. Even though we didn't agree, we, we still want to move forward. You guys approve. We will not contest that at the tax court.
Okay. So you guys are good with the recommendation of the hearing officer?
Yes.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the decision of the hearing officer.
Moved to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn our Board of Equalization and convene into regular session.
So moved.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will do our executive session at the end of our action items and... And item nine and 10 are, are with the executive session. So we'll move on to action items. H1, discussion, possible action for authorization to fill A, three vacant clerk, court clerk positions for justice of the peace. And B, court clerk position for the Court of Superior Court. Everything in order there, Meta Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item two, discussion, possible action to approve proposals with ADT commercial for various court building security enhancements. A is number 891228222 for door access controls in the amount of $8,719.46. Item B, number 891228223, main lobby in the amount of $9,281.55. And C is number 1891228224, door in the amount of $920.48. Everything good?
Yes, sir.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second that discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item three, a discussion, possible action to approve proclamation designating October 2021 as Santa Cruz County Arts Month. That was requested by our superintendent. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second that discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Is the superintendent...
I know he's there, but let's... No, look at him, he's in pain.
Okay. Well, he stood up. I didn't know if he wanted to say something. So...
All in favor? All in favor.
Aye.
Alfredo, thank you so much for bringing this. I think it's important to show the, the importance of what art plays in our community. So thank you very much.
I just want to introduce Evan Corey as our art director for Santa Cruz County. And he's going to give you some commemorative tiles for the month of October.
Oh, great. Thank you.
And he comes from a pioneer family in Santa Cruz County.
Absolutely.
You waited till after we voted to give us the tiles.
That's right.
Yes.
If not, he would have. And this from Mr. Malletta.
Thank you. Evan, would you just know a little bit about yourself, sir? Good morning. My name is Evan Corey and I'm the art director for the Santa Cruz County School Superintendent's Office. And on behalf of our office, we want to thank you for proclaiming October as Arts Month. We're very excited. And throughout the month, we'll be having lots of events and, and good things for the community. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Evan. Appreciate it. Nice tile.
Mr. Chair?
There's one for you here, too, Rudy.
I just want to commend Evan for all his hard work and the beautiful artwork he, he's done throughout the city and, and his incredible musical talent, talents as well. Thank you, Evan.
Great. Okay, any other comments? No other comments. Okay, item four has been removed. Item five, discussion, possible action to approve COVID-19 vaccine incentive program for all county employees fully vaccinated before December 31st, 2021 in the amount of a one-time cash payment of 500. Jennifer?
Mr. Chairman, as the agenda item presents, this is an opportunity, a voluntary program for a one-time $500 cash payment for any county employee that's fully vaccinated before December 31st. It applies to employees that have already been vaccinated as well. The total, if everyone was to get vaccinated, would be just shy of $200,000. And that money will be paid for from the American Rescue Plan Act. We saw in Pima County, they offered a similar incentive and their vaccination rate went from a third of their county employees to two-thirds of their county employees. So we do think that this is an effective tool for the vaccination and to help prevent the pandemic from continuing.
Thank you. And legal has reviewed it and it's passed the legal test, right?
Yes, sir.
Great, good.
Here.
The legal muster, that's, that's why I want, I wanted to, to make sure that it is within. Supervisor Brecker, Vice Chairman Brecker?
I do have a question from Meta Manager. What has been the cost to date of covering COVID infections in county employees?
Thank you, Supervisor Brecker. I did not write that down. Currently, the county has paid almost just shy of $500,000 in COVID-related illnesses. That does not include the time lost from our employees that have had to take time off of work to care for themselves to get better, but just shy of $500,000, Supervisor Brecker.
Okay. Great, thank you. Supervisor Malletta, any questions?
No, I'm fine.
Great, good. So, so Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I will go ahead and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item six has been tabled till the next meeting. Item seven, approval of minutes of 9:21, 2021. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second that discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Demand, Supervisor, Vice Chairman Brecker?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay our bills of $1,188,779.63, of which $246,543.07 are from the general fund.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. We can pay our bills. At this time, Chair will entertain...
What's that? I wish Congress would do that.
Well, well, that's something different. So at this time, Chair will entertain a motion to recess and convene into executive session pursuant to ARS 3843103A3 and 4, for two items, discussion and consultation for legal advice and/or direction regarding, one, Arizona distribution of opioid settlement funds agreements, and two, discussion and consultation for legal advice and/or direction regarding a possible settlement for a notice of claim made by Show Baseball, Inc.
Move to approve.
I'll second that. And so we will now recess and convene into executive session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously and we will convene into executive session. Tell us when you're ready, Juan. We ready? Okay, at this time, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our executive session and convene regular meeting.
Second.
I'll move then.
Move that we adjourn. And there's a motion in the second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries unanimously. We will now go to item number nine, discussion, possible action to execute one Arizona distribution of opioid settlement funds agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the...
Settlement.
The opioid settlement funds agreement.
And work him. And execute.
And execute. We approve and execute the opioid fund settlement agreement.
Great. I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Right, motion passes unanimously. Item 10, discussion, possible action to approve a possible settlement of notice of claim made by Show Baseball, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we have staff and council proceed as directed in the executive session.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And the last item is adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Meeting stands adjourned.
Please.